How do we go right into the special meeting?
Special meeting.
So we go to special meeting of Glendale City Council. Today is June 9, 2020. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the June 9, 2020 special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable channel six on Charter and Spectrum and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandalcada.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, you see on the top of the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have a, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman, here. Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Gajianian?
Here.
You don't say that, I didn't say here. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rajimian. Next item, please.
The agenda for the Tuesday, June 9, 2020 special public meeting of the city council was posted on Tuesday, June 2, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Ms. Yasmin Beer.
We're still gonna have Rita.
Item 9.
Yes, you want to read the item.
One would be community development regarding 515 and 523 North Central Avenue Stage Two Design Review, case number PDR 2005010. A, motion approving Stage Two Design. B, motion approving instrument imposing covenants on real property.
Okay, Ms. Yasmin Beer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this item was before you for Stage One Design Review on January 14 of 2020. We are here for Stage Two, and Ms. Vista Ezati is going to take you through a PowerPoint presentation and provide you with information related to Hotel Indigo's plans to move forward and answer any questions that you may have. With that, Ms. Ezati.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. This is an application for Stage Two Design Review for the project site located at 515 through 523 North Central Avenue. The proposal is to construct a seven-story hotel with 137 guest rooms, ground floor restaurant, second floor pool deck with lounge areas and a meeting room. The applicant is Rodney Khan, and the request is for final Stage Two approval. Staff has analyzed the project against the DSP standards and guidelines. A detailed analysis is attached as Exhibit 2 with the staff report. As proposed, the project complies with the new DSP standards and zoning requirements, including parking. No variances are required. The project site is located on the southwest corner of Central Avenue and Duran Street in the DSP Transitional District. Currently, the site features a one-story fast food restaurant and drive-thru that was built in 1993, and a two-story office building originally built in 1922. The South Glendale Historic Resource Survey did not identify either of these buildings as eligible for historic designation at the national, state, or local level. Both buildings will be demolished as part of the development. The area surrounding the project site contains multifamily residential development to the west, and along central, there are high-density residential and mixed-use developments, as well as general and medical office uses. On January 14 of this year, the city council reviewed the Stage One Submittel and approved the proposal with six conditions, which have been appropriately addressed with the Stage Two application. I will be going through how the revised project addresses these conditions in the next slides. An analysis is also provided in the staff report and design memo. Additionally, while the room count and height of the project are the same, some changes to the Stage Two Submittel will include clarification of the lot size and the publicly-accessible open space area. This is a result of required dedications and the addition of outdoor dining for the hotel's restaurant. Also, the FAR has increased by .02. The first condition of approval was related to creating a desirable step back at the upper floors. This has been addressed by stepping the sixth and seventh floors back from the floors below, anywhere from nine inches to approximately four feet nine inches on the different building facades. Condition number two was related to the southern portion of the Central Avenue facade, as highlighted in these images. The architect-
I have, I have a question, if I may interrupt.
Sure.
I don't know if Rodney or the architect's on the line, but in Stage One, or Bradley, in Stage One, it seems like that upper-level step back is more pronounced, and you can actually see it, but in the second one, I don't see it at all. And you say they increased the upper-level setback?
It's, it's done throughout the different facades on all four sides, and it will range depending on where you are. The architect is going to be able to answer that question maybe more specifically during their presentation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Condition number three was related to the white stone cladding and its placement on the building facades. The architect has revised the material, and they're proposing a rough travertine brick in a cream color, so it's a smaller-scale material. Also, the amount of this material has been significantly reduced, and its placement has been concentrated above the base of the building and complements the design. Condition four related to extending the industrial look of the building corner to other portions of the project. The architect has revised the design to extend the industrial aesthetic of the black steel I-beams and glass to other portions of the project. This provides a better integrated design and more visual interest. Condition five required the blank facade seen at the ground floor along Doran and the alley to be modified. The architect has redesigned these facades to be detailed and compatible with the overall design. They have also incorporated at these facades a brick finish with recessed niches and precast concrete bases. And finally, condition number six was related to standardizing the fenestration on the west facade with the rest of the design. This facade now features a regularized window pattern. Also, this portion has been designed to feature the steel and glass industrial look, which integrates with the overall design of the building. As it relates to building setbacks, Central Avenue is designated as a mixed-use commercial frontage, which has an 18-foot setback requirement. This includes a five-foot parkway, 10-foot sidewalk, and three-foot building adjacent zone. Doran is designated as mixed-use residential with a 16-foot setback requirement, which includes a five-foot parkway, eight-foot sidewalk, and three-foot building adjacent zone. The building has set back the required distance from both frontages. In addition to an alley dedication, compliance with the building setbacks will require dedications along both street frontages for the right-of-way improvements. The site plan of the project generally remains the same as the Stage One Submittel, with the building designed to occupy the majority of the site and a large entry courtyard oriented towards Central Avenue. The project is providing 120 parking spaces, where 110 are required by code, with parking provided in a three-level subterranean garage. Vehicular access is proposed from the alley and a new driveway entrance on Central Avenue. The ground floor includes a private meeting room, lobby and reception, and a restaurant and bar with outdoor seating. The mezzanine will include seven rooms and the pool equipment room. The second floor includes 17 hotel rooms, as well as the pool deck and outdoor lounge Floors three through six are similar in layout and have 23 rooms per floor. And the seventh floor is smaller and features a total of 21 rooms. Hotels are identified as a priority use to provide a community benefit. They're an important component of a thriving business district and provide amenities which are available to the public. This includes restaurants and meeting rooms. Projects in the Transitional District can use this incentive program to increase their permitted height from 65 feet to 95 feet, and their FAR from 2.0 to 3.0. This hotel project is using this incentive for increased height and FAR. This will require the developer to record a covenant on the property. Accordingly, an instrument imposing covenants on real property is recommended for approval and included as Exhibit 4 of the staff report. Overall, the height en masse-ing of the project has not changed since the Stage One Design Review Submittel, and many of the design details, treatments, and materials will remain
Ms., one second. Let's, yeah, go ahead.
Just, could you explain the covenant a little bit more? What, what does the covenant include? What does it limit them to?
Mayor, members of the city council, very simply, it's a promise to maintain the use as a hotel. What we did not want to have happen is that it convert to something that was undesirable from the city's point of view. So if they ever did have to come back to the city council and ask to be released from that covenant. Is it-
And just, yeah, if I, I would add to that, because they're getting incentive, it's to guarantee that they're, you know, engaged in the use that, for which they're getting that incentive.
Right, and is it only a hotel use, or are there other acceptable uses?
Only a hotel use.
So if somewhere down the road it were converted to residential, let's say, what, what would happen?
Would have to come back to, they couldn't convert it, they would have to come back to the city council, ask to be released from the covenant to convert to something else. But the city council would be able to make that decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, so the project design has appropriately incorporated the required height and facade modulations. This helps add visual interest to the skyline, as well as at the street level. The project is a contemporary design and features a combination of metal, stone, and brick, which is consistent with the style and the DSP standards, which encourage human-scaled materials to reinforce the pedestrian character of the public realm. At the building corner, a steel and glass tower has been incorporated into the design. This industrial aesthetic is repeated throughout the various building facades, including the lobby entrance, storefronts, and the upper-floor window openings. The project addresses the public sidewalk with the design of the street-level facades appropriately detailed with high-quality materials and integrated with the overall design. Wooden steel canopies help separate the ground floor from the floors above and emphasize the human scale at the street level. The project also features a large courtyard along central that will enhance the pedestrian environment and also provide a large public open space. The building facades are primarily clad with brick veneer in a weathered red clay color. A precast concrete base has been incorporated along the building facades that helps ground the building. Above the first floor, the design includes vertical elements, which are framed with the steel I-beams and clad with the rough travertine brick in a cream color. This helps provide texture to the building, and the placement of this element complements the overall contemporary style. The design also includes large expanses of glass that's subdivided into smaller units, with differentiation provided at the base and the top of the windows, which is consistent with the DSP requirements. The new hotel provides the required publicly-accessible open space within a 2,200-square-foot entry courtyard that is 100% open to the sky and oriented towards Central Avenue. The public open space area is also well-integrated with the outdoor dining areas proposed for the ground-floor restaurant. The entry courtyard complies with the DSP standards, will expand and reinforce the public realm, and also contribute to the livability of the downtown. The courtyard features the required landscaping, including canopy trees, and a special feature large specimen tree located in the center of the courtyard. This area also includes facades with human-scaled materials, pedestrian-scaled lighting, and public seating.
Yes, please, Ms. Brot-
What, what, could you go back to the last slide there?
This one?
Yeah, that, that kind of geometrical pattern.
Mm-hmm.
What, what, what material is that?
I believe it's-
I don't know if I saw that in the report.
It, I believe it's a patterned concrete. It should be called out on the landscape drawings towards the end of the package.
I might have missed it.
Let's see. I believe it's in the imagery. Let me see if I can find it real quick. It just says drop off with decorative vehicle pavers, so those would be some kind of paving material.
Didn't we know what it is?
The, the architect can speak to the actual material. My understanding was it was some kind of concrete type of material to allow for durability with that, with that geometric pattern.
Okay.
They can clarify that, I believe.
Okay, because I know we're focused on, you know, good materials, and it is going to be part of the public space here, so.
Absolutely.
I'm interested in knowing what it is.
You may ask the question from the architect.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Uh-oh. There we go. The project also includes a large pool deck with outdoor lounge areas. This is considered open space, although none is required for the hotel use. The architect has submitted landscape plans that detail the programming of both the public open space and pool deck for your consideration. Overall, the project design is consistent with the DSP Transitional District standards and guidelines, and no variances are required. Staff is recommending approval of the Stage Two Design Review application with conditions as noted in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions from staff?
I have a question.
Mr. Najarian?
So, this is a transitional area, a transitional zone, because there's housing, multifamily housing behind it. Were it not for the, what's that, the public benefit incentive that they were given, what would the height limitation be?
65.
And now it's almost 95.
95.
Just an inch or two below 95.
Correct. 95 would be the maximum allowed. They're doing 94 feet, you know, eight inches, and that's measured, I believe, to the top of the elevator or stair shaft.
So I know the DSP standards are coming back in July, and I would like council to review, and I've already spoken to staff, to review whether we want to continue with that public benefit to give the additional height in the transitional zones. But that's not a comment on this, it's obviously on its, well on its way under the current standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from staff? Okay. Thank you. Now, architect wants to present something, say a few words. Who's next?
There are two callers on the line.
The callers, we got two callers.
Oh, hold on, let's make sure we get the architect, or the-
The applicant is the first caller.
Yeah. Mr. Khan, probably go to Mr. Khan first.
Is the line one, is that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Khan, you are on here with city council and mayor and staff. Mr. Khan?
Yes, city staff.
Yes.
My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are located at 1111 North Brand Boulevard, here in the city of Glendale. We are proposing to construct a new Indigo Hotel, and Indigo is part of the Intercontinental Hotel Group, which is IHG. We have a signed franchise agreement with IHG to bring this hotel to our city. As I mentioned at our Stage One City Council hearing back in January, and we do have two new city council members sitting here today, our project has been designed to meet all of the downtown specific plan standards, and as staff has emphasized, with no variances, no deviations, and no exceptions. We've also provided the open space completely open to the sky, along with the landscaping and the other modulations that are required. Also mentioned last time, both the parking and the traffic. It was important to us to have additional parking, so we exceed the code requirement for parking. We think that will only help our project. As it relates to traffic analysis, once again, we did a traffic analysis for our site. As you all know, we have a fast food restaurant with a drive-thru out there, burger thing, along with an office building. And the conclusion and analysis from the hotel project is that we will actually generate less traffic as a result of this project than currently existing on the site. We've incorporated the, the conditions, as was called out, and I know that council member Devine talked about the building stepping back. I'll, I sent a message to our architect. When he speaks, he will speak to that point, and then I also heard council member Brotman talk about the paving material, he will speak to that point as well. To conclude my part of the presentation, we're moving forward with our hotel project, even during a very difficult time, a very, very difficult time with the hospitality industry. We, VK Group, believes in the city of Glendale. We believe in the Indigo Hotel and IHG, and we feel that by designing this project, as we have a high-quality hotel, that it will help to set the standard for future development in our city. What I'd like to do, I'll conclude my remarks, and then if you could turn it over to our architect, he'll walk you through the changes and answer your questions. Thank you very much.
I, I have a question, councilmember Devine.
Ms. Devine.
Yes, Mr. Khan, you had a video the last time showing the building from all perspectives. Did you bring that along today? I had requested so that we could review that again. I guess that's redundant, but review it.
Yep, yes, we did. Councilmember Devine, we provided that to the staff. It's called a fly-through, and they should have, yeah.
Okay, so we'll be seeing that?
I hope so.
Okay, thank you. I'll check with staff.
We have, we have it? Oh, okay. Oh, so you're gonna, can you play it then? Since-
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, more questions?
No, that's it for now, thank you.
Okay, I go to the next caller, I guess. You are on here with mayor, city council, and staff. Is this the architect of the project?
Yes.
Please, go ahead.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and city staff. My name is Jeremy Grant, and I'm speaking on behalf of TSM Architects. We're located in downtown Los Angeles. Thank you again for allowing us to present. Here's the changes that we've made in our Stage Two Submittel for design review. There's been some questions. So we have stepped back the upper floors of the central bay at the sixth and seventh floors to give a greater relief to the facade along North Central. On average, all the facades have been stepped back to provide a cohesive design throughout all viewpoints of the project. These range from nine inches to almost five feet. The step backs along North Central have been increased, on average, to provide about two feet of step back on the upper floors. We have also legalized the use of brick cladding and treated the central facade in the two main styles of architecture for this project, brick and steel frame. At the vertical bay adjacent to the driveway and the public accessible open space, we have retained the corner glazing with the steel frame, but we have replaced the white stone tile cladding to a rough travertine brick to allow for more human-scale reception of the project. We also value that corner glazing as it looks out onto the pedestrian activity on North Central Avenue. We have revised the project design to replace the white stone tile cladding, as I mentioned, with the rough travertine brick. We revised the placement of this cladding to better complement the overall architectural style, and this occurs above the first level. We've revised the project design to extend the industrial aesthetic of black steel I-beams and glass to all public portions of the project to provide a more integrated and upscale design. We've redesigned the facades facing the alley and Duran Street in brick with recessed niches and precast concrete bases to provide a more architectural and grounded, interesting architecture with, more consistent with the overall building design. We've revised the west facade, as you've seen, to incorporate the industrial aesthetic consistent with the overall building design. We are providing the 2,200 square feet of publicly-accessible open space at our entry courtyard. It is 100% open to the sky and oriented and accessed from North Central Avenue. This large publicly-accessible open space along North Central will enhance the pedestrian environment with the landscaping, some shade trees, public seating, and the central large specimen tree. We hope it contributes to an impressive public amenity to the thriving business district. Now, I know there's a question about the paving. These will be an upscale quality, high-impact paver. Our landscape architect is very experienced in private and public open exterior design, hardscape design. So we, we want to have a nice front door that will last, that will be lasting in front of our hotel, so it will be of high quality. If you have any other questions, please feel free to ask, and thanks again for your time.
Is there any question from the architect?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, please, Mr. Brot.
Yeah, you're saying it's high-quality material, but what, what is it going to be? What material?
It will be of a precast concrete.
Precast concrete.
The, the mixed additives, as far as color, texture, permeability, those will all be of a higher standard to take the foot traffic, to show less wear, and to extend the maintenance life.
Couple, just a couple-
Yes, please, go ahead.
Little things that, I mean, this is all new to me, so, but this, this material that you put, this rough travertine brick material, it, I don't know, my understanding is kind of like the trendy thing now. It just strikes me as a little bit tacky, and I wonder if you could consider something like a fiber-reinforced concrete that might wear better over time, a little bit more industrial-looking?
Yes, I think we could take that and consider that material, and maybe it's a condition of our approval that we review it with staff and find the best solution.
That would be okay with me. One other...
Yes, please.
Two other items. That black, I don't know what you call it, that horizontal beam right across the very top. It kind of...
An eyebrow.
I don't know what you call that, but it kind of looks heavy, and I don't know if it would look... You know, how it would be if you'd use like a gray, a lighter gray color, whether that would give it a little bit more of a human look. But I... Just kind of questioning that.
Of course, we can consider other dimensional aspects of that eyebrow design to give a more lighter look. We have actually explored that eyebrow and parapet design with the staff, so that can be an ongoing effort.
I mean, what do you think about that? Would that... Do you think that would enhance kind of the... You know, the approachability not look so imposing?
Yes, I think the lighter gray color would benefit from that aspect. And we're also treating the underside of that with a natural wood soffit, so hoping that that softens and gives a greater human aspect to it.
Okay. And then my last question is just, it says you're developing a lighting plan, and I wasn't sure what you had in mind. But, you know, it'd be nice if it was kind of a diffused light, it was even, and you could kind of see the whole building rather than like, you know, having certain elements be light and the rest of it is dark. I don't know if you've discussed that or what you have in mind there?
Well, the original intent, the architectural style of it dates back to 100 years. And, you know, in the first couple decades of that, lighting was relatively new, so it was a lot of cove and indirect lighting to provide a lot of area lighting. And it wasn't, you know, the focus was on signage and mostly on signage where it's point light and bright light. So we're wanting it to be a subtle approach to the lighting design and not be overbearing to the nearby residents or, you know, adjacent residents.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any other question from...
I have...
Yes, Ms. Divine.
Actually, I think the... I like the courtyard. I like the idea of the olive trees. I hope we see those when it's final. And in the photo on the first page of the report, the plans is beautiful. It shows some seating on the north side, Doran. On Doran, is that going to be there? And the restaurant opens onto the street. Am I correct?
That is correct, yeah. It does open... The wall does open to our outdoor dining area, which is within the property. The Duran, that's along Central. And then along Duran, we have some outdoor dining. That is more like walk-up or standing or bar seating. So there's not a lot there. There's a pass-through window that we could have for service and the rest of the outdoor area.
Okay, okay. But there will be some seating there of some sort, even though it's not a lot?
Yeah, we felt that it was important to wrap that corner with some activity.
Yes, I like that. Now, about the modulation, and I know I've had some conversations with staff about this, and it appeared in that first slide, and I don't know if staff can go back to the slide when I asked the question about the front facade. And it might have been floors six and seven. I thought there was a setback there. Okay, on the left, the front facade at the beginning where you compared. There you go. On the... Can you see that? Is this Mr. Kovach? Who am I speaking to?
This is Jeremy Grant.
Oh, Jeremy Grant?
Jeremy Grant, yeah.
Okay, on the left side, the Stage One design, at the top of that tower, it seems like there is a setback. And then when we get to Stage Two, it seems to have disappeared. And there went the modulation, there went the interest. All the interest seems to be on the right side of the building. Did that disappear? Or it says increased upper-level step back. But that was in the central... What are you talking about there, where the red circle is?
The central bay.
So it's a central bay, which would be in the inset overlooking the open space.
Okay, why is the circle around the left side of the building?
I did not prepare this document, so if it is referring to step back, then the circle would be all along the floors, on the top two floors.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Divine, one of the requests there was to unify that design of that portion there a little bit better, and that's essentially what we were highlighting with that circle, not to discuss necessarily the step back, but it was more about the unifying feature of the design. As you can see, some of that white travertine-style material was removed, and we incorporated that brick into that.
Okay, of the overlay, the black, what you call it? The black overlay?
It's industrial steel, steel and glass.
Yeah, there's steel and glass. And then you circle on the north side, I think it was, you circle where modulation is. I'm not circling, but you had it in red. And what is the modulation there on the north side where you showed? Now, that seems like it's all a brick wall, just a straight wall. Are those indentations where the red lines are that we're not seeing anywhere? I mean, it's very difficult to see on these renderings and drawings where the modulation, where the inset and punchouts are.
That is correct, Councilmember Divine. The red lines are to indicate essentially a change in the depth of the materials and the facade. So you see kind of those incremental points. Per the DSP, we have requirements every 50 to 150 feet for major and minor modulations, and essentially that's what we're trying to highlight with these red lines here, is that they have satisfied that requirement.
Okay, all right. And the white there has been changed to the black cladding or the black or white in that?
That white material is the one spoken of earlier. It's essentially kind of a lighter stone travertine-style material that's there to essentially emphasize that change in depth of the facade and to kind of provide relief from the brick that's on that facade as well.
Okay. And I have a question about... And I'm not an architect either, but putting gray around the top of the building, would that be consistent with the building?
So we've actually worked with the applicant for a number of different concepts there. We went through about two or three different iterations with this. One of them did explore a different color. One of them also looked at just having the brick go all the way up. And what we found as we looked at some of the graphics and the images that they presented to us is that this actually ended up being one of the better solutions because it tied all of the materials together. The concern about a different color is that it would be introducing essentially a fourth material to this that wouldn't tie well to the others without that kind of eyebrow, as it was referenced to. The brick just going straight up felt a bit heavier. It kind of emphasized that massing a little bit more, and it didn't provide that kind of visual termination that you would kind of expect to see at the top of the building.
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree with you there. Okay, I think that's the extent of my comments. Thank you. Just make sure all that landscaping is there, please. Please.
Is there any other questions? If not...
Mayor, I do believe there's one more caller on the line.
One more caller, that's right. You're on the air with City Council members and staff. Hello? Do you have the name?
It does look like it was Mr. Rodney Khan again calling.
Oh.
Hello, Mayor?
Yes, we are listening.
Yeah, I'm just... I'm here to answer any questions. When I did my initial presentation, we got disconnected. Calling back on just in case there are any questions. Thank you.
Mayor, one more question, please.
Yes, please, Ms. Divine.
Yes, the Indigo is a three-star, four-star, five-star hotel.
A three-star hotel.
Three-star, okay, thank you.
Thank you. And, Ms. Councilmember Najarian?
Couple questions and a comment. First is, will this be the last time we see this upon approval? If so approved?
Last time that the council sees it, yes.
The council sees it. Second comment is, thank you, Rodney Khan, for registering as a lobbyist. This is exactly what we had in mind, and it would cost you $31 to do so, but I think you can address us with clear conscience today. The third is, usually we talk about labor when we look at hotels. Has there been any discussion of labor and permitting an open... What's the term? An open shop where labor will be permitted to meet and organize if they so choose? Staff, any discussion on that?
Not related to the design, no.
Okay. Well, I'll just be aspirational at this point. It's not a design feature, but I hope that the management at IHG will certainly consider a strong and stable workforce that is paid a living wage. And the Hilton up the street has such a workforce, and things seem to be working pretty well for them. And that's just something I'd like them to consider when it comes time, a few years from now, when we perhaps get ready to cut the ribbon on this thing.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Najarian reminds me of another...
Ms. Divine.
You know, one of my... And we're bringing this up tonight, is personal safety devices for hotel workers. And I'm wondering, Mr. Khan and to the architect, if you've given any thought to putting in devices like that or some system for your workers to maintain their safety, even before we counsel, you know, mandate it or request it or require it? Have you given any thought to that?
Anybody wants to answer the question?
Yeah. Councilmember Divine?
Yes.
We've had discussions with IHG, who's our partner in this, and there's a number of different standards they're looking at, and standards for personal safety. There's also standards related to what's going on with this virus right now and how it would be treated in the future. And as correctly stated by Councilmember Najarian, we are two to three years off before we would be opening, but we would be working on those standards as they come about and as they get defined.
Right. But if you're in the building process in a year or so, you could think about alarms or some sort of a system in place to keep the employees safe, especially your female employees. I know that there is a problem, and I'd like to see it addressed before, you know, before it's too late. So just keep that in mind. Thank you, Rodney. Thank you.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Thank you. One more. Mr. Brod.
Thank you. Since we're being aspirational, and thank you to Councilmember Najarian for being aspirational, just a question about solar on the roof. I'm surprised I didn't think to bring this up earlier. But are you planning to put solar on the roof? And another thing that you probably know, a lot of cities are moving to electrify buildings as much as possible. In some cases, cities are prohibiting the use of gas hookups altogether, but certainly to try to make the building electric-ready so that if there are items that do require gas, and I know certain things like heating pools is still difficult to do with electric, but that the building could easily be and inexpensively retrofitted to be all-electric as gas gets phased out in the state of California. So those are two things. I don't know if you have anything to say about either of those, but those are two things that I think would be good to think about as well.
Councilmember Brod, the only thing I could add to that would be, we would consider both of those. I don't have an answer for you right now, but as this project progresses through the design and the construction process, those are two things we can consider. Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, I didn't get it. So there will be no solar panels on this building?
No, we're not proposing any solar panels at this time, but we certainly could look at that.
From City Attorney, can we make that a requirement?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I don't think it's within the authority, the purview of the council acting as the design review authority to make that a requirement where it's not imposed in the code. It's not a design feature. It's more towards, you know, environmental sustainability, which is not within the conditions that are authorized in the DSP at this time.
Mr. Brod.
Yeah, you said you don't think it is. Are you sure? Can we put it in as a condition subject to your further evaluation?
I defer to staff, and I said I don't think so, because it's not... I was just trying to be diplomatic. It's not...
It's not, okay. Well, just say it's not. But is this something, and I know this is a little bit off what we're here for, but is this something that we could consider when we do the... Do we look at the guidelines for the DSP? You said in July. Is that something that we could put into the guidelines so that in future it can be, we would have authority to require that?
I don't know that solar is so much a design feature as it is a building code feature. And forgive me, I can't remember. I do know, and GWP, I think, did a memo that we can resurrect for you, committing Steve to certain things. It's very difficult to put it on a commercial building and make it useful to power the building. And I'm not doing a very good job.
No, I know exactly what you mean.
But Steve will... Steve has a better handle on that. So we would want to look at that, and what does it really do to a building? Are we achieving what we set out to do?
Yeah, okay. Another... Subject for another time, I understand. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Zern?
Yes.
Mayor, I thought that I had brought that issue forward, and Councilmember Quintero has seconded the motion that we look into solar on commercial buildings in Glendale in changing our codes.
Right, and that was something that GWP was presenting information on, and I thought, I may be mistaken, but I thought Mr. Zern had prepared something. Ms. Beers is shaking her head, no.
I don't remember that, no.
We'll look at it and provide the information. I do know that you had brought up the matter, Councilmember Divine, and Mr. Quintero had seconded it, and we were going to bring something back because it's not something that is required by state law in terms of building and safety codes. But we'll have to go back to the record and see where we are in that process.
Now, what happens with this building now if we can't ask to have solar panels on this large roof? I don't see that they're using it, so it's not like there's a swimming pool in there or any other features in there. Yes, please.
One thing I would add is if that's... If there's an item that comes back to council on putting rooftop solar on commercial, and it's applied citywide, and this project hasn't obtained its building permit, it's something that could be required, assuming it doesn't comply, conflict with any other uses that are proposed on the roof, which I'm not sure there are. So that's something that can be addressed when we look at that and when we...
But so that's something that can be addressed when we look at that, when we bring that issue back. And if it's some city-wide requirement that's imposed, it could be imposed on this project, assuming they haven't obtained their building permit.
So we can add to that if something changes, will it apply to this building?
Yes.
Although I heard the gas, it will be, I don't know, 10 years, 15 years, it will be so clean that...
Don't believe it.
I'm just saying that to...
Yeah.
Don't believe it, yeah.
Everything is possible. I see, I, in my life, I saw things which I thought would be impossible became possible. Anyway, that's however. So, Mr. Najarian?
And briefly, I don't want to take this too far away from the, the design that's in front of us, but perhaps when we look at the DSP standards, we can talk about requiring new construction in the DSP to be subscribers of renewable energy. I think the point is, is not necessarily that there's solar on the roof, although that's good, but the, but the energy that they use is from renewable sources, not from gas-generated. And some municipalities have those programs where you can buy in to the 100% renewable. The idea back then was it was a little more expensive, I think, but now maybe it's, it's the other way. But, but not for this building now. Maybe that's something that perhaps fits in our DSP discussion to encourage the use, the subscribe, subscription of renewable, which might mean a different rate, charge, or something. But maybe we need to bring GWP in as well. But I think that's where, that's where Mr. Brotman is ultimately going. Maybe he wants to go a little bit further, but that's the direction that, that he's going. And if we're going to look at the standards, even though they're design standards, maybe we can discuss the utility issues as well.
Correct, Councilmember Najarian. As part of that DSP lookback that we'll be doing in July, one of the items that you'll see in the council report and will present as part of the presentation are what measures would the city council like to pursue regarding sustainability? So that could be certification or anything along those lines.
There you go, fits right in.
And I think with this conversation, you've put this developer, this hotel operator, a notice that if you were to change something, they should think about that right now while they're designing.
Or they have to follow what we will decide pretty soon.
So they want to make sure that they plan for that.
Okay, with that, Mr. Garcia, do we have everything, all information?
I think, Mr. Mayor, I think there needs to be a motion, and then if there are requested conditions of approval, somebody would need to make those requests as part of a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Mr. Kasakian.
I haven't said much because I don't have much to say on this item. I, I was in chambers when it was first presented or saw it when it first came. I think the design is, is one of higher quality, and, and I think, you know, it hopefully will serve as a standard for any future developments and give the downtown the distinct character that we're looking for. I want to thank staff for working with the developers. I'm not generally for, I, I don't see the need for more hotel rooms in Glendale, and I've been public about that. But I believe that, you know, in this regard with this project, I know that we're going to bring back something that reviews and studies as to what the need is. But for now, I think that this is a very nice-looking building. It fits well into the downtown, and I'd be happy to make the motion. But there's conditions that my colleagues want to attach to it.
A second?
Okay.
If I could just attach, can I?
Yes.
The two conditions, well, I think three was just, those are the things I brought up about the, that travertine material. If we could look at the, oh, the fiber-reinforced concrete, and the other one was that.
Eyebrow.
That eyebrow, is that what it's called? Yeah. If, if we could, if, you know, staff would work with the architect to see whether a lighter color might, might be a better choice. And then just clarify what that material is on the, that geometric pattern that's on the entryway. And I think it might be around the pool, too, if you could just, you know, just make sure that staff is, is comfortable that that is a good quality material that's going to present to the public right in that, in that entryway. So those would be the conditions I would like.
Is it condition or recommendation? Because if it's condition, we have to vote on it, I guess.
I, maybe you can guide me, because this is my first.
Right, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, what I'm hearing from Councilmember Brotman is a requirement or proposal for conditions that would be working with staff on these three items, the travertine material, looking at the fiber-reinforced material, looking at the lighter color on the eyebrow, and then clarifying that the material that's proposed on the geometric pattern on, on the entryway is of a quality material. So they're all, there are conditions, but they're all conditions requiring the applicant to work with the staff on those items.
Correct, correct. I leave it to staff and the applicant together to work out what's best for, for Glendale.
Mr. Najarian?
So I think Mr. Kasakian was going to tell us what he thinks, whether that's friendly or not.
I'll, I'll accept those. To work with staff, yes, absolutely. I'll accept those if Councilwoman Devine would also second them.
I would second that.
Okay, now, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay, I guess, I have a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned at 4:49 PM. Thank you. Congratulations to the building owner.
Today?
Are we going to, so we're going to do that right now?
Well, we'll call it to order, then we'll go over to the conference room.
And we just have one item?
We have two.
But only one from, that I sit in?
Right.
Okay.
Want to read the closed session?
Do you want me to take roll call?
Yeah, please.
Mayor, would you like me to take roll call?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Bro, Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Here.
Closed session for today, 1A, is conference with real property negotiators. Property location, 216 North Brand Boulevard and 116 West California Avenue. Negotiating parties, Glendale Arts Agency negotiators. Attending the closed session are Yasmin Beers, Rubika Lanyan, Mike Garcia, Jillian Van Miden, Philip Lansafin, Jennifer Hiromoto, and Darlene Sanchez. Instructions to the negotiators will concern the price and terms for the lease of the property. Be with be conference with legal counsel. Pending litigation, Jung versus City of Glendale, L.A.S.C. case number BC717130.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, on item 1A, the records should reflect that Councilmembers Brotman and Devine will be recused, and that Michelle Flynn, the finance director, will be joining in on that closed session. And then we don't have any reportable items on either of these two items.
Thank you. So we adjourn to the closed session?
Recess.
Recess to closed session.
Thank you.